Okay, settle down.
We're good.
We've started. Thank you.
Okay. Meeting of the City Council convenes in an open, public session. All council members are present. Your council people are absent. I'll announce it here. I gotta find my stuff here. Okay, a copy of the opening's meeting act is posted by the entrance to the council chambers and is available for public review. Tonight we have the invocation with Jeff Kelly of the Memorial and Heritage.
Now, let's pray. God, I just thank you for the work of our city employees and our council. They do a good job. I know there are things that they like to do to help our citizens and sometimes their hands are tied because of other regulations and other commitments that have to be made. But we just say, ask you to be with them as they deliberate this evening and make choices for residents of our community. Thank you for the place in which we live and the people who support and actively are involved by volunteering in our community to make it a better place. So I just pray your blessings on this meeting and this gathering this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any announcements or recommendations tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd just like to introduce two of our new officers to the council. We have our new detective, his name is Jared Hunter. He comes to us with around thirty years of experience total in law enforcement. We look forward to the work that he's gonna be able to do for us. And the other one is James Wright. He comes to us with about three years of law enforcement experience and we're happy to have both of them and get them out on the road and working for us. So I'd just like to introduce them to the council.
Excellent.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to approve a proclamation designated September seventeen through twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four as Constitution Week and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, post nay. I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake. Okay. We have a public hearing.
And prior to moving forward to public hearing,
Yes.
this probably just needs to be removed from the agenda. We have a specific request from the applicant making the request. So both the public hearing as well as the, so three A and three B, both being approved. Will you just do the motion again, or?
I motion. I have a motion.
It's in the, it's in the path up there.
Yep.
Oh, I wanna do it.
I'll move to remove the agenda at the request of the applicant Josie Domingos, items three A and three B.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor vote yea, post nay. Okay, I'm not quite ready, just. There we go. Okay, I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake.
Do I get to read that long-windedly?
It's all yours.
I move to recess as the city council convenes a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding proposed modifications to McCook zoning ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash two-nine-two-nine, Article Three. Definitions adding chouse, prohibiting chouse in Article Eight residential low-density district, Article Nine residential medium-density district, Article Ten residential medium-density mobile home district, and Article Eleven residential high-density district, reducing the maximum height provision for accessory buildings from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet in Article Eight residential low-density district, Article Nine residential medium-density district, Article Ten residential medium-density mobile home district, and Article Eleven residential high-density district, and amending accessory buildings' maximum height requirements in Article Twenty-One supplementary district regulations, section two-one-zero-three from twenty feet to twenty-five feet, and asks the city attorney to act as hearing officer.
I'll second that.
All those in favor vote yea, post nay. Mine is not coming out.
You have to scroll down on the right side.
Scroll down.
On the white box, scroll down. Yeah, I just scroll down. There you go.
I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake.
There are four exhibits being offered for this hearing. Exhibit number one is the city manager's report, that's two pages. Exhibit number two is a notice of public hearing, one page. Exhibit number three is ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash three-oh-nine-oh, that's five pages. Exhibit number four is the email from Tyler Neal. I'll accept exhibit one through four in the evidence, take comments from city staff before opening up to public comment. Nate?
Thanks, Daniel. Kind of odd arrangement tonight. This was the planning commission item that was heard prior to the council meeting. Typically, we try to have a planning commission and council meeting separation, but tonight it wasn't feasible. So this specific request actually was an item that we had on our list for the zoning regulation updates that we're working on there, a steering committee the council appointed that is going through the zoning regulations. And chouse actually was a topic, a hot button topic, that our consultant, Miller and Associates, had said, yeah, we're gonna probably need to go ahead and define what a chouse is. And as a city, we've, we've had a couple of questions as well, too, regarding whether chouses are allowed in residential districts or not. There was a structure that was built on East Sixth Street that probably would classify as a chouse. At the time that the structure was built, I know that our building inspector was looking at the regulations, trying to determine whether or not it's allowable or not allowable. And in his estimation, based upon the information that we had, there's nothing in the regs, whether it was the International Building Code or any of the accessory codes, our own ordinances that would preclude it. And I mentioned in my report Nebraska is a Dillon's rural state, which basically means that if there's no law, if this allows a requested action, the city doesn't have the authority to go ahead and preclude that action from happening. And so, so the structure was built, I think afterwards, I don't know how many phone calls I got, I know Barry got a number of phone calls regarding the structure. And so, our plan was to go ahead and include chouse as a topic of discussion in our zoning regulation update. The zoning regulation update is moving forward, just kind of an aside. Barry and Tara and I have been working on the zoning regulation update, trying to get it into form that we can take back to the steering committee. There's only one more steering committee meeting that's scheduled, so we wanna make sure that we've had a chance to put our eyes on it and make the changes that staff feels like will do to make. And then following that, we'll go back to the steering committee, to the planning commission, the council, and then we might bring it back two times to the planning commission and councils, everybody has some time to go through and take a look at it. It's very time consuming. Getting back on to the subject at hand, the concern that you have, and the concern that I have with these types of requests, I've had a lot of requests over the years, a lot of times you'll see in principal structures. So, so in the residential density districts, there are very, very specific uses that can be made for your lot, and most of them revolve around residential property dwellings. And, and that's the way it's supposed to be. I mean, you wanna make sure that your, your residential districts are set aside for residential purposes. The, sorry, the residential district that we currently have allow for a couple of additional items as well, too, but those items are very specific to residential type structures. So what we are looking at trying to do, or what we're proposing right now, is limiting what you can put onto a lot, so that way it's going to be specific to a house. Chouses are kind of a combination, they might be storage, they might be workshop, they might be, you know, something that, that has maybe an accessory use, if you look at permitted principal use that it's tied to. But as a standalone, they're not typically allowed in residential districts. And so, the concern is with the chouses, the, the primary purpose is actually probably storage of maybe a large RV or utility vehicle, or whatever the case may be, or workshop. It's really not for residential, and we're trying to assure that that doesn't happen because you don't wanna devalue the other properties around that area that are truly residential structures. The other thing is, the concern might be if you were to allow a chouse in residential with secondary, when it gets sold to the next person, that person's gonna use it for accessory purposes, not for the primary purpose. So the person that's living next to the chouse, they say, yeah, you know what, I'm good with this, I'll make sure I maintain it, I'll take care of it, it's right next to my primary structure, it's, it's gonna fit. But the next person they sell it to, because it's gonna be on a standalone lot, that individual may say, you know, I'm ready to use it for storage. And they aren't tied to that lot like you would be if it was a residential structure, you're not gonna maintain it like you would with a residential structure. You know, get out there, you know, outside, out of line, so if you don't see it on an everyday basis, it's easy sometimes to let things go. So the chouse provision that we're asking the council to consider, we would ask that for right now, the chouses, which would be a storage space or a workshop connected to living space, not be allowed. And then, as we move through the zoning regulations and kind of get a feel for what we want on the zoning regulations, we can always amend this, because like I said, this is gonna be going to the planning commission and the council again in the larger comprehensive zoning update. But for right now, we do have an issue, we know that there's a property owner that's doing some dirt work, I'm not quite sure exactly what they're willing to do, but the concern is that there could potentially be a chouse that's gonna be located in the residential medium-density district, and if that's the case, it doesn't start creating issues for the other property owners that are located in that area. So that's the reason for the request. The other items are just more housekeeping items, I shouldn't say housekeeping, one of them's housekeeping. The, it's housekeeping items. You're wondering.
Don't quit your day, John.
So one of the, one of the items or one of the requests that we're making to the council is to differentiate the size and height of accessory buildings, going from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet. We've seen a lot of shops, accessory buildings that have been built that are a little bit larger than what you typically see for an accessory type use. Right now, thirty-five foot height or the height of the principal structure is allowable. The concern that you have is if the accessory structure tends to be put on the same courting or the same level as, as a residential structure, is it really secondary in nature to the principal use? And so, for a while, we've been talking about decreasing the height of the accessory structures to twenty-five feet. While we've been working through the supplementary language in the new code, we also realize that the existing provision in the supplement section allows for twenty-foot accessory structures, but nothing higher than that. So you have, I mean, you've got two provisions that are at odds with one another. In the residential district, it says you can have thirty-five foot structures potentially, and in the supplemental, supplemental district, it says you can't exceed twenty. So what we're proposing is twenty-five feet, just to make sure that everything is uniform. That should accommodate RVs, Barry and I have been looking at different structures around town. It should accommodate large RVs, you know, storage for UTVs, whatever the case may be. But, but it also would make it so it's a little bit more conforming with what the primary use of the structure or the lot's supposed to be. So that's in a nutshell.
Any questions for city staff from council? Any comments or questions from the public? Tyler, do you wanna?
Yeah, so I submitted an email.
Go ahead, and I know you did the first meeting, go ahead and come forward and introduce yourself.
Tyler Neal, I, I live fifteen Tenth Central Drive. My wife and I moved to McCook about seventeen years ago. You know, McCook grew on us, it's now Halls. We just bought our, our dream home, it's on fifteen Tenth Central Drive. About a year ago now, the neighbor who owns the property, it was a, it was an empty lot between us, started moving soil. There's no restrictions for, from him moving soil, moving dirt around. I've had lots of conversations with Nate and Barry about the situation. Definitely built a basement so far, and without a doubt, it's, it's probably gonna be a storage unit or a chouse. I tried myself to talk to the property owner about, hey, what's going on here? You know, I paid a little speed neighborly about it. Literally no, no conversation, well, little conversation about what is actually happening. I'm very unneighborlike, in my opinion, but. So here I am, year later, like I said, bought my dream home about a year ago, and we're probably looking at a chouse next door. And I do believe that it will affect my property values, I do believe it will affect property values of the community, of the neighborhood. And so, I'm just here to support the agenda of putting ordinances on things like this. I come from a small community, the Sandhills, and I can tell you what relaxed ordinances do to a community and what it does that kills it. Because for too long, you have one neighbor that builds one structure, anything they want, and then you have a, a neighbor next door that might have a home property value worth, worth twice it. And, and over time, with ordinance not being maintained, not being updated, you have a dead community. Property values aren't there to support school, school's dying, consolidating, doing the best it can to survive, and that's what I love about McCook. It's a nice community in western Nebraska, and I think we should do everything we can to maintain that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the public? Hearing that, I recommend we reconvene.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the city council.
Sir. All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-ninety implementing modifications to McCook zoning ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash twenty-twenty-nine. I am of this ordinance number twenty-twenty-four thirty-ninety by title, and ask the public please read the title. An ordinance in the city of McCook, Nebraska, providing for the amendment of McCook zoning ordinance number two thousand sixteen twenty-nine twenty-nine, amending Article Three definitions adding chouse, amending Article Eight residential low-density medium-density district, Article Nine residential medium-density district, Article Ten residential medium-density mobile home district, and Article Eleven residential high-density district, prohibiting chouses and reducing the maximum height provision for accessory buildings from thirty-five to twenty-five, and amending Article Twenty-One supplementary district regulations, section twenty-one oh-three, changing the accessory building's maximum height requirement from twenty to twenty-five feet, provided for the repeal of any, of any other conflicting ordinances and dividing time and date from and after which this ordinance should take effect to be enforced. The next item on the agenda is to consider statutory rule required reading on three separate occasions be suspended. Motion to suspend the rule must be adopted by three quarters of the council.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-ninety has been introduced, read by title, and moved at the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended.
Second.
Any discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, post nay. I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake. Next item on the agenda is the final passage of ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-ninety.
I move for final passage of ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-ninety.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, council? All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-four thirty-ninety is declared lawfully passed and adopted upon publication as required by law.
I can't vote again.
I know, mine covered the rain, too. I did it, I canceled it. I got it. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the twenty-twenty-five McCook Plan of Street Improvements. Right.
I move to recess as a city council and convene a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on the twenty-twenty-five McCook Plan of Street Improvements with the city attorney to act as the hearing officer.
I second that. Is there any discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, post nay. I vote's cast Jane, no votes cast snake.
There are eight exhibits being offered for this hearing. Exhibit number one is the city manager's report, that's one page. Exhibit number two is a notice of public hearing, one page. Exhibit number three is resolution number twenty-four twenty-four dash twenty-five, one page. Exhibit number four is one-year street plan, one page. Exhibit number five is the long-range street plan, one page. Exhibit number six is twenty-twenty-five Plan of Street Improvement flat map, one page. Exhibit number seven's twenty-twenty-five, one and six-year plan, budget spreadsheet, one page. Exhibit number eight's projects completed and or contracted in the last fiscal year, that's one page. Accepting exhibit one through eight, the evidence, take comments from city staff before opening up to public comment. Nate?
I'm gonna turn over to Gray. Actually, this past year, obviously, we had a, a biggest year in street construction in McCook since I've been in the streets, to see the projects. Half of the money expended was on tip project between North Point and Business Park, so funded through tax increment credits, and the other half is funded through our regular street budgets that include the gas tax and, and the money that the city puts in on sales tax. They will be done. Right now, we have the major asphalt project under construction. The schedule is pretty close to whether, they're probably not gonna be completely done by, you know, September, but it'll be first week or two in October, they shouldn't be completely done. North Point is completely done, Business Park has a little bit of finished grading to be done, and Rock on Seventeenth Street, and it'll be done, it's all graded out. Drainage systems are installed and ready to go, so.
I believe there's some street lights, too, to put down there?
There are street lights, that's done through the best part of the year.
Right. But they're waiting on, I think they're waiting on the grading to be done.
They're waiting on the final grading, yes, they're still working on that, but that's, if they were good, it would be done today. Just waiting on getting all that finished up. The one-year plan, the overall plan, we did not add any projects to the plan this year. We felt after this year, howl said take that. Hold up the funds a little bit. So the projects in the long-range plan, the one-year plan, have been on the plan for previous years. We do have on the one-year plan two paving, paving district and drainage district, that's West Fourteenth from O to Q. There's been a lot of development there, the street needs to be finished, the, and there's some drainage issues there from all the development, but I'm sure you guys know anytime you drive down on Q Street after a rain, it's covered with mud and rocks, every time, just, we need to get that fixed. We have a preliminary plan done, we have meetings set up with the landlords, the property owners, for improvement districts for, actually, I have meetings set up with all of the two. We should be ready to, and then we will bring back to the council, kind of what the property owners said about improvement districts, so that will be, come back to the council hopefully, probably in the winter, maybe, something like that. So you can look at the priorities we have beyond that, and basically what I did on priorities, that shows up on the, on the long-range street plan there, in order there. What we did is we, we did move a few ahead that we've had some, a couple of issues that were further down, the mall project on the cute west second, Q Street intersection, is , is, is concrete, all the rain that is, it's past time for replacement. We moved up the west old highway six, which is the road to the transfer station, which is the, the truck traffic on that road is probably one of the worst streets in McCook. We're fixing one right on the north side of Rossport in this project, so we're gonna get rid of one of the worst streets this year, so. You know, these other streets, we did move some down. We have fairly high on the priority, West Second and P Streets, but we did evaluation back this spring and felt we could fix that and get several years out of that street with armor coating, so we did that. And that street got most crack filled and armor coated.
Double armor coating, actually.
So to extend the life of that pavement, so that one moved down, it's, it's still on the list, but it's probably worth down. Other than that, we just then basically moved the projects that were in order before. We did, these projects, everything moved, moved down, and you can see where they are. We do try to evaluate every year, budget, and we look very hard at, at the one-year plan to see what needs to happen in the one year. Again, the reason the, the two projects that are on the one-year plan right now, they're showing in the district, so definitely does not come out of our, our regular street budget. So as I said in my report, we're trying to build that budget back up after it's been after it's been through the government issue.
Any questions, council? Any comments?
It's been busy.
I can tell.
It's been busy.
I didn't ask you.
The only thing I will say is on the, on the projects completed, the country club drainage, we are under contract, technically contract, but we do have a contractor lined up to put it in on a long country club drive, sometime this fall. On the old, I have a question. On my old highway off the transfer station, would you widen that a little bit? Because I'm talking, you know, you meet a semi and it's it would add a pretty substantial cost to the project for it to do that. There are some elevation.
I think by the time we overlay it, right now, it's the old it's old Lincoln Highway seven that has that curbs on the inside, which narrows the highway by, by time we overlay it, I think we're going to get rid of that curve.
Okay.
So you're going to think it's wider, but it's not.
Okay. When you meet a, you know, when you meet a transfer dump truck, it is, it's like, another problem is when acres forces their combines out, that water runs down. And that contributes, I think, a lot to that deterioration of that, that road.
Is any part of that project some kind of a ditch drainage system on both sides to get the water to?
I would like to visit with them prior to the design.
You know, just to get the water off our street.
It would be.
Have to be over there.
It'd be very nice. Otherwise, I think the problem will continue. I'll just show you, Norris Avenue right now looks awesome.
It was looking.
Which part? The part that's done. But it's going to be nice, it will be nice.
It will be nice. Hopefully, we'll have it done by Friday. We're going to be far enough north that it shouldn't affect it.
Sarah's gave yourself on that perfect spot.
Yeah, we'll be done, right?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public before we let these guys go? All right, you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Uh...
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-25.
We need to...
What? Oh, or come out, oh, that's right. I move to adjourn the public hearing to reconvene the city council.
Second.
Hey, any discussion, council? Hey, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
You vote first, what's on second?
I vote to cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
I'll get you some.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-25, approving the 2025 McCook Plan of Street Improvements.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, council? Hey, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
I vote to cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda made by the request of any single council member or public intimitants be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Anything, council? Stand.
Nothing, your honor?
Anybody in the public?
On the consent agenda, make a motion to accept items A through J.
Second.
You got a motion to accept A through J? All those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
I vote to cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
Okay, under the regular agenda, we have a presentation from Erica Bush with West Central Nebraska Development District in regards to property in their designated area that should be declared a nuisance, properties that should be rescinded from the previous declaration of nuisance, and properties that need abatement. Good evening, Erica Bush with West Central. And tonight, I will be presenting the 2024 McCook Nuisance Program. On tonight's agenda, I will be recommending one property to declare nuisance by resolution. I will be recommending four properties for a motion to abate, and I will be recommending four properties for a resolution to rescind. And I will go over each property individually. First up, 2024 MCC 109 with parcel ID 001062000. This property, we are recommending to declare a nuisance for the following items. There are buckets, barrels, receptacles that could collect the stagnant water, discarded material, or litter, to include the cardboard. We have scrap wood. We have inoperable equipment. And I say inoperable because it has been there for over a month. Include the lawnmower, scrap metal. The brick is neatly stacked, and so that is of no concern. Next, I am recommending to, for a motion to abate of following four properties. This first property, 2024 MCC 006 at 1110 West 13. I've had no communication from this property owner, but this property has cleared a lot of items. The items that remain are mainly on the driveway and a little bit scattered on the rest of the yard, but to include scrap metal. The scrap wood is neatly stacked, so that is of no concern. But buckets, barrels, receptacles that could collect stagnant water, including coolers. There are appliances, inoperable equipment, packing crates or pallets. Next property, 2024 MCC 010 at 1401 West M. And this property has unlicensed vehicles, scrap wood, scrap metal, a toolbox, receptacles to include that looks like a lawnmower bag, but again, not too short, discarded material. I posted this property, so they had an additional about three weeks to clear. I received no communication from this property owner. Next property, 2024 MCC 043 at 1111 West 12. And this property, I've had communication from the property owner and also the tenant. The major concern right now are the tires. The tenant is having trouble getting rid of the tires or recycling the tires. And like I said, I've been talking with the property owner. He's on board to get everything cleaned up. But again, they have been very cooperative and understanding of the program. Tires, buckets, barrels, scrap metal, scrap wood, auto parts. Next property, 2024 MCC 108 at 1201 West 13. I have received communication from this property owner in the past. The items, they have cleared a lot of items, but the items that remain now would be the buckets or barrels, receptacles, scrap metal, scrap wood, and tires, and also an unlicensed vehicle. And next, I'm recommending to rescind, I'm recommending, I apologize, a resolution to rescind for the following four properties. 2024 MCC 024 at 1009 West 13, 2024 MCC 029 at 1112 West 12, 2024 MCC 093 at 1410 West 14, and 2024 MCC 103 at 1405 West 16. In summary, 256 properties were reviewed. 110 courtesy letters were sent out with 101 properties clearing. Four properties recommending to rescind for tonight, that is included in tonight's count. One property I'm recommending to declare nuisance. And this is a little bit of a straggler property. We've had a little bit of a mix-up with ownership, but now that we got that cleared up, we are moving forward declaring. Four properties I'm recommending for a motion to abate, which I'd like to remind everybody that that doesn't mean we're going to go on the property tomorrow and abate. It provides the property owners additional time to clear. And then four properties have already been out of motion to abate, so they are ready for a five-month, which will happen in October. But we like to wait until the end of the season and we get, we wait for all the properties that are going to be settled for abatement into all the five days at once. Before that happens, I will present to the council. Oops.
So you clicked out the plug.
Well.
Erica, we lost power just on the TVs. Can you hear us? Okay, can you hear us still?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know where it cut off, but that'll do it.
Any questions, anybody? Are we ever on?
Erica, you're talking about rescinding certain properties, and one of them you list is 1009 West 13th Street. Do you have an updated photograph of that property, please? I made a match left.
She's got it right here.
For rescinding for 1009 West 13?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that property cleared those nuisance items, so there's nothing to take pictures of. So no, I do not have pictures because they removed the coolers, the scrap metal and scrap wood that were in front of the mobile home that we had posted the property and talked to him after we had posted and he had cleared those items when I went to one of them for my review.
Okay, about 1410 West 14th Street. I drove up there today, and that's a blue mobile home on the west side of the street.
1010 West 14. So that property also. So if, if a property clears, we do not take pictures of any items because those items that we asked for that property owner to clear have cleared. And so I had spoke, I spoke with this property owner, and the last thing that was remaining were the tires. And when I went for my review, the tires were gone.
Okay, when I drove by this afternoon, it appears the trailer is abandoned and the weeds are easily waist-high.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't monitor weeds as part of the nuisance abatement program, or else we have to be doing reviews every single week for the communities, and then that would just kind of skyrocket the contract fees. So we don't monitor the weeds, that would be through the city.
And Debbie Thor would be the person to contact if there are some weed violations or?
I'm more concerned about the abandoned trailer. I mean, the weeds are on site, be sure, but the abandoned trailer worries me with dogs, cats, homeless people, yada, 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 yada. Okay, I'll get with Debbie. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Erica, what's your overall impression of the actions taken in that area? You felt like it's, do you feel like you've seen quite a bit of improvement in the district after you guys started doing your work?
Sure, sure. So my main tagline that I discussed with the other gals here in the office is when the cook says they're going to clean up, they clean up. I have found, there have only been, you know, a couple of property owners that have been upset and has called and, you know, upset about the whole program being full, what to do and how to do it. Other than that, property owners have been really great, you know, working with me. They have been communicative, and I've seen a lot of cleanup. I have noticed a couple that have cleaned up, and then when I cleared, and then I go for my next review, they do have a couple big things, but unfortunately, I can't just fill them back in. And those are what we call the repeat offenders. And we can, for the next nuisance season, if McCook decides to move forward and go through the application process again, you know, there could be a chance that we pull in some of those repeat offenders.
And what does that new cycle look like? When will we need to go ahead and re-up with West Central?
Sure. So applications are going to go out in October. So there will be an email that goes out to each community that lets them know the process, but it'll go out to communities that are already in the nuisance abatement program currently, and they'll get those applications first. And so usually, they're due, I believe, November 1st. We are having a little bit of staff changes here, so it might be a little bit of switch-around, but it will be sometime in October, and the communities will be provided enough time to get those coming to us. But I'll let you know for sure, for sure, once I find out.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Erica.
Thank you guys very much. Have a good night.
See you, Erica.
Night.
Okay.
Ray, you want to be?
Yes.
I, I move to approve resolution number 2024-21, approving the designation of nuisance properties as deemed by WCNDD and as declared in the resolution.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay. RC, you might need to...
It said that everyone was disconnected, so we need to definitely refresh.
We need to refresh who?
There it goes. All right. High votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
Jane, next item on the agenda is to approve resolution number 2024-20 to approving the rescinding of portion of resolution number 2024-13, which previously declared certain properties a nuisance and which now have been abated and cleared of the nuisance as deemed by WCNDD and as declared in the resolution.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
I vote to cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
And next item on the agenda is to approve resolution number 2024-23, approving the rescinding of a portion of the resolution number 2024-17, which previously declared certain properties a nuisance and which now have been abated and cleared of the nuisance as deemed by WCNDD and as declared in the resolution.
So move.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
I vote to cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
Next item on the agenda is to approve WCNDD's motion to abate for the properties located at 1110 West 13, McCook, Nebraska, 1401 West M, McCook, Nebraska, 1111 West 12, McCook, Nebraska, and 1201 West 13, McCook, Nebraska, to be abated.
Oh, I'll second that. Or some move pick it, some move. Second house.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay. Sorry, I didn't even open it. There you go.
I vote to cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-3085, providing for the adoption of the budget for the 2024-2025 year. I introduce ordinance number 2024-3085 by Tyler, and ask the clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to return the annual compensation bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities provided effective date.
Ordinance number 2024-3085 has been read by title, and I move to approve upon its third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Wanted to highlight a couple of things, and also want to thank the council and Leanne and Tara and the department heads. I know I said that during the reading of my transmit letter. It has been a very complicated budget season. By far and away, the most complicated budget season I've experienced since I've been city manager. I appreciate everybody hanging in there with us, and I hope that people understand that we really do try our best to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. However, we do have obligations that the city has to meet. And we've got to figure out how we are going to pay for those obligations. The weight study in LB34 obviously created some, some difficulties for us. The wage study in LB 34 obviously created some difficulties for us this year. But that being said, um...
That's understated.
Yeah, yeah. But that, that being said, though, I mean, I appreciate the discussions that we've had. I think this has probably been maybe the most discussed budget we've had in quite some time. And, and it's hard. These are hard decisions, you know, everybody understands, you know, the implications, but also, we've got a job to do, and our primary job is to make sure that the city operates the way it's supposed to. So I did want to go ahead and note a couple of different things here really quickly, just to make sure we're all on the same page. As far as items that are outside of what we had talked about to begin with, and items that I want to make sure that we're all aware of, there is one police cruiser that we have included. That's $80,000, if I remembered correctly. Is that right, Kevin?
That also includes some software for dispatch that we already have in place that will come up for renewal, so that also includes...
And on the public work side, we've talked about kind of what we'd like to see over there. We try to replace some of the old equipment that we've had that's getting, getting a little volatile too. So we're looking at a used dump, dump truck, mower, and then a truck and plow. And that would be approximately, hopefully around $180,000. We're gonna do our best to see what we can find. I'm not sure exactly what that means, you know, as far as what we get, as far as the old dump truck, but Kyle and his guys are doing the best they possibly can to see what we can do with the additional funds. Obviously, the wage study is something that we need to make sure that we are complying with. We've already done it with the internal order of police and their contract. Earlier tonight, we, during the consent agenda, we had an item for the firefighter, paramedic, firefighter lieutenant, firefighter ENT positions with respect to MOU, to make sure that we're accounting for, for the wage changes that the study called for for them. And then all of the other employees that we have, we're doing our best to try to follow along with the instructions that we have from Paul Essman. He's the one that conducted the wage study. In the past, we always get to the very bottom of the wage study, and then we never really go beyond there. That's the reason why we continuously have to update, 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 to make sure that we are trying to keep up with the other communities in our array. This year, we need to make sure that we're finally placing everybody where they're supposed to be on that schedule, so that way we can discontinue the process of updating over and over again. And obviously, with the uncertainties that go along with LB 34, if we don't do it now, I don't know what that means for the future years. And so that's why we made the recommendation. Originally, we were talking about trying to put it in over a period of time, the wage study findings, not just one year, but multiple years, but it kind of forced us to rethink that strategy when we started thinking about what LB 34 meant for the community. So other items that I wanted to make sure that I touched on with the council, we did get word back from the insurance company. Leanne, again, I don't know how she does, I think that she's, I don't know if she's Karnack the Magnificent or what, but, but she had predicted 30% increase on the insurance side. I was like, please tell me that's not gonna be the case. She's pretty darn close. The premium came in at 16% for everything, and then the wind and hail increases that a final amount to just under that 30% mark. So I hate the fact that she's right on this, but she was dead on the money on this one. And so, so we're gonna continue to, and, and a lot of it is just driven by the, the large weather events that we've seen all across the state. Even though McCook may not experience it, it doesn't mean that other communities aren't experiencing it. It's not gonna change our insurance structure for the upcoming year. So some cool things that we're doing this year, the inclusive playground, that's a fundraised effort. The, I know they actually came and spoke with, yeah, it was Mariah Pearson, Tricia Wagner, I think it was Kaylee Weimers that was here, but they came here and they kind of gave the council maybe some insight into what they're thinking. They've applied for numerous grants. I know we've got a DED grant out there for $500,000. Want to say there's another grant that we've got out there for 100,000, is that right? Maybe some other opportunities that are out there as well, too. I know Tara's got a meeting with some people from the...
Dortry?
Dortry?
Dortry. I'm thinking of the lead singer of the Doctor. The Dortry Foundation, they're gonna be here on Wednesday. So, so we have $50,000 that the council has set aside in the general fund to help pay for the inclusive playground. We may not need to, based upon how these grants play out. So we'll kind of watch and see, and, and looking forward to that project moving forward. We also have the Safe Streets for All Grant that kind of ties into the projects that we're seeing around town, whether it's over on South Street, Highway 83, where you're gonna see more truck traffic due to the fact that the industrial park is expanding to the east. Over on the northwest side of town, where you're gonna see a sports complex, residential and commercial development here in the near future. We've got to figure out exactly what we need to do on the street side to make sure that we're a safe community and possible community, but there's some cool things that are happening. And this planning grant's gonna go a long ways into assisting us with, with the, the project, and then hopefully this is gonna make it also a little bit easier for us to get a construction grant in the future as well. We've got $75,000 set aside for an airport improvement project. That's through sales tax. We are almost done with the AMP, the Airport Master Plan slash Airport Layout Plan project. It's been a little bit longer than we anticipated, but once that is done, we're gonna be ready to move forward with some projects out there on the airfield. We've got some things identified right now. Just remember, it's a 10% match, so out of that $75,000, it's 10% of the overall project cost. It may be a little bit less this year. We're not quite sure exactly what we're gonna have on that project list, but we wanted to make sure that we had everything covered, just to be on the safe side. So if we put in $75,000, it means that the federal government's putting in $750,000. Is my math right on that, Kyle? Thank you. My fact checker is back on, I appreciate that. Also, we're talking about $25,000 putting towards the parking lot project over at the swimming pool. Right now, we're installing sprinkler systems. Also, there's gonna be some saw that's coming, I think it's week if I remember correctly.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. So it's gonna look really nice and neat around that area. That parking lot's gonna be a costly need to make sure that we're taking into account, so that's included in this budget as well, too.
Are we looking at, look for next year, then? Or this year?
Yeah, for this upcoming year, yeah.
2025?
24, 25. But probably 25. I don't know what the timing is. For when we actually do the work up there.
Oh, I'm waiting on an estimate back. It's, it could be yet this year.
And then also, we've got uncommitted sales tax that we're putting towards the purchase of the Walters property. I'm gonna go through a breakdown of everything here as soon as I go through this sheet, just so. Leanne and I on Friday morning, we were running around doing about 100 different things, but we got together and we said we gotta identify where the pots of money in the general fund are gonna come from to pay for the Walters property, so we've got a pretty good plan moving forward.
And you'd have to correct ourselves, it'd be $675,000 from federal funds.
That's...
750,000.
Yeah, yeah, that sounded right to me, too. I was like, that doesn't sound quite right. I said 750. Thank you. So one thing I did want to note, I know the council's aware of this, the bond sale is complete. We should receive the proceeds, proceeds from the bond sale on September 20th, which is this Friday. And then closing is still set for October 2nd. Nate's helping us get all the pieces of the puzzle put together. I think that we're getting everything pretty much...
I got this signed as surveys today that staff should have brought over.
And I think I saw that somewhere.
Yes, that was the last piece that we're really waiting for, is about to get done. So, yeah, the closing should be pretty smooth, I think.
And last week, Leanne, Tara, and I had a conversation with Mike Rogers, our law and council. There's some information we're sending over to them just to make sure that we're complying with all the federal requirements, and I feel comfortable with that, too. So I think we sent that over to them. So, yep, so we're good to go on that side. One thing that I wanted to mention when we were talking with Erica, you know, in the general fund, and I always say this, I really struggle putting public funds into private people's problems. I'm not a big fan of putting money into nuisance funds, because I think that private individuals should take care of their own issues. It shouldn't be a public issue, but we have budgeted for that, and we did account for both West Central, which I think their contract is $22,500 this year, and we have an additional amount budgeted to hopefully take out one house. So we've got $40,000 budgeted this year as opposed to $25,000. It's not a lot, or it doesn't sound like a lot, or sorry, take it back, it sounds like a lot, but we realize that taking out a house is about $18,000 to $27,000. It's really not that much. So again, I would ask for people to make sure they take care of their own properties. It really shouldn't be a public issue, but it falls in our laps when those things do happen at a deteriorating rate. And then I wanted to go through the Walters property discussion, because this ties in directly to our budget. I mentioned the fact, so the purchase price for the Walters property is $3.286 million, and I've mentioned this before in the past, the reason or the way that we came up with that price. We had appraisal, after the appraisal, we, we realized that number probably wasn't quite accurate because it gave an agricultural value to that property. It's actually gonna be a mixed-use property. And so we spent a lot of time, Tara and Charlie and Amanda and Kyle and myself, looking around the state and other cities of the first class, trying to figure out, how much does this kind of property go for? So we looked at Crete, we looked at Seward, we looked at York, we looked at Scotts Bluff, we looked at Lexington, looked at Carney, and other cities of the first class, trying to figure out, how much is this, this land worth? And the fact that you've got commercial, residential, and then also the sports complex included, $25,000, I think at the end of the day, it's gonna be a bargain. That's $25,000 per acre. But I think that we're gonna see us redeem that fairly easily once we start developing that property, because we've always had people that have come to McCook and said, hey, we wanna develop in certain districts. Well, this is a district they're gonna wanna develop in, and so you might start seeing other big developments in that area. You've already seen some good ones on Highway 83, whether it's the Cobblestone or the Holiday Inn. I'm sure that there are others. I know Kyle and I have driven up that stretch of road about a billion times, and developers looking at it. But now we can start actually talking to developers and saying, we've got some land for it, please look at McCook. So the other areas that we've identified to assist with the purchase of the land, aside from the bond proceeds, which we're earmarking at half of those bond proceeds to put towards the purchase price, which is $1.593 million. We've also spoke with Charlie over at MEDC, and I can't confirm this, but I think that they're going to assist with LB 40, and we talked about a number, we're thinking maybe $250,000-ish, so that's kind of what we've got penciled in right now. Sales tax, we have uncommitted sales tax in the amount of $628,000. Thank you to the people that voted for the sales tax. It's gonna help with this purchase. This dates back to 2001, 2007, and 2015, but for the sales tax, this doesn't happen. And this is the biggest project that we've seen in McCook since 1980, when the golf course came in, probably. So, so that's, that's huge. CDA, City Investments, this is Baumont money that's, that's sitting there. I don't know why it's there or exactly what that is. If it's interest that was generated...
It's interest that was generated on the bond proceeds.
Okay, there's $65,000 there, and we're input towards it. And then we're looking at a combination of LB 40 motor vehicle funds, debt service funds, which is what we use for improvement districts, and then also insurance proceeds to go ahead and round out the remainder of the funds that we're gonna utilize to purchase the property. Ultimately, our plan is to replenish the LB 40 fund, replenish our funds as we sell off lots, and I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I truly believe that you're gonna start seeing people that are gonna wanna develop in McCook. I've had great conversations with Amanda and Charlie about developers that are looking at McCook, and they've just been waiting for this to happen. You know, the sports complex is the key to development. So that's where we're gonna pay for the land from, we're excited to close on it, and it's only a couple weeks away now, so. And then the fund begins, and we're talking about that today, you know, the planning for the, the sports complex. I can't wait to do that, so. Anything I can't think of?
Clarify, if you keep going to the following pages where I was just reading that down, we need to reallocate on your sales tax that's included in the budget, so the ones, the ballpark improvement, the pool improvements, the uncommitted amounts will be revised, so it's not gonna show that it's coming out of the complex in the final budget document or coming out for the complex.
Thank you. Okay. Are you ready? Okay, we have a motion in a second to, for Ordinance Number 2024 dash 385, to approve on the third and final reading. All those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
High votes cast Jane, low votes cast Nae.
Okay, Ordinance Number 2024 dash 386, providing for the adoption of the 2024 dash 2025 fiscal year employee classification plan. I introduce Ordinance Number 2024 dash 386 by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance of the city of McCook, Nebraska, providing for the adoption of the 2024-2025 fiscal year employee classification and pay plan, providing for an effective date for the implementation of the classification and pay plan, repealing any and all other ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for a time and date from and after which is certain, so take effect and be enforced.
Ordinance Number 2024 dash 386 has been read by title, and I move to approve on its third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, any discussion here?
Again, you know, this, we talked about the wage study, you know, the, the plan in front of you is a direct result of the work that was done in the wage study. I know we've mentioned it before. Public entities play by, you know, the rules that the state sets up, and so we have to make sure that we're following along with terms that are given to us by the Industrial Relations Act. This provision, or this, this plan does that, and hopefully it's gonna mean that our guys over here and gals are able to hire good people to work for them. I think that's been a struggle for us, trying to find people that are willing to take positions that we've been advertising, and then we've been trying to fill. I'm hoping that this makes us competitive in moving forward, you know, when we've got vacancies, we're able to, to fill them. And then also, I think that it tells our current employees that, hey, you know, what your value, we're making sure that, that you're treated the same as other communities that are similar to us, and I really do think that it's gonna have a positive impact on our operations and in turn, the city of McCook.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
High votes cast Jane, low votes cast Nae.
Ordinance Number 2024 dash 203086 is declared lawfully passed and adopted upon publication as required by law. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2024 dash 388, providing for the amendment of Chapter 38, Appendix E, Water Department Rates and Fees. I introduce Ordinance Number 2024 dash 388 by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance providing for the amendment of Chapter 38, New Schedule Appendix E, Water Department Rates and Fees, of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, providing for a rate to be charged for water by the McCook Water Department, providing for the repeal of Ordinance Number 2024-376, and any and all other ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for a time and date from and after which is certain, so take effect and be enforced.
Ordinance Number 2024 dash 388 has been read by title, I move to approve upon its second and third reading.
I'll second that. All those in favor vote yea, opposed nay. All those in favor vote yea opposed nay.
Five votes cast Jane, no votes cast Nate.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024 dash 3089, providing for the amendment of Chapter 38, Appendix D, Sewer Department Rates and Fees. I introduce ordinance number 2024 dash 3089 by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance providing for the amendment of Chapter 38, please schedule Appendix D, Sewer Department Rates and Fees of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, providing for the repeal of ordinance number 2024-3077, and any and all other ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a time and date from and after which this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 3089 has been read by title, and I move to approve upon its second and three readings.
Second.
Jane, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea opposed nay.
Five votes cast Jane, no votes cast Nate.
Okay, ordinance number 2024 dash 3087, providing for the amendment of Appendix F, Solid Waste Collection Fees of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances. With the clerk, I introduce ordinance number 2024 dash 3087 by title, and ask the clerk to please read that title.
An ordinance providing for the amendment of Appendix F, Solid Waste Collection Fees in the City of McCook, Nebraska Code of Ordinances, providing for a rate to be charged for solid waste collection and disposal, providing for the repeal of ordinance number 2023-3072, and any and all ordinances conflicted with, and providing for publication in pamphlet form and for an effective date.
Ordinance number. Ordinance number 2024-3087 has been read by title, and I move to approve upon its second and three readings.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor vote yea opposed nay.
Five votes cast Jane, no votes cast Nate.
Jane, next item on the agenda is to consider ordinance number 2024 dash 3091, setting the salary and compensation of city manager Nathan A. Snyder. I introduce ordinance number 2024 dash 3091 by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance of the city of McCook, Nebraska, setting the salary and compensation of the city manager of the city of McCook, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a time and date from and after which this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 3091 has been reduced, read by title. I move that the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended.
Second.
Jane, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea opposed nay. Gee, welcome for another here.
I, I enjoy what I do.
Five votes cast Jane, no votes cast Nate.
Okay.
I move for final passage, ordinance number 2024 dash 3091.
I'll second that.
Jane, any discussion? All those in favor vote yea opposed nay.
This isn't, he's going to take us out for ice cream afterwards?
Yeah, it's on, yeah, it's on. Well, it's on the house. Yeah, I think I've got a tab over it.
Five votes cast Jane, no votes cast Nate.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 3091 is declared lawfully passed and adopted upon publication as required by law. Is there any comments? Anybody?
Is it your birthday today? Happy birthday.
Thank you. I thought we'd have ice cream and cake later.
Okay.
On the house.
No, I am.
Okay, I declare this, there being no further business to come before the council, I declare this meeting adjourned at 6:51 PM.